All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. We have one item on our agenda today, and that is to go over the agreement between Richmond and the town. See Patty's here? All right, John, why don't we start with you? You can give us an overview of the changes since Thursday, and maybe go from there.
Okay, so after Thursday's meeting, Ilana drafted up a red line version reflecting the changes that had been agreed to at the meeting, at least as we perceived them. And over the weekend, however, we received some emails back from Richmond indicating that some of the changes had not been agreed to, quote unquote. And so there was a back and forth primarily yesterday. I'm sorry. So there was a back and forth yesterday between Ilana and the attorneys for Richmond, which actually served, I think, to substantially reduce the number of items that were in contention. And what you have in front of you is a November 9th draft from Ilana, which is today, which incorporates all of the changes, the back and forth changes over the weekend, plus some additional language that we'll go through, having to do with more specifics on the infrastructure improvements. So...
Okay, just before we go any farther, the drafts that we have are dated November 6th.
No, you have...
There's some November 9th.
November 9th, it's in yellow.
Oh, okay.
It's highlighted in yellow.
I had the wrong one on top.
And we're recommending that that's the draft that everyone use.
Yeah, it starts with 535199.
Yeah.
That's the...
Got it, got it.
And this was produced by Ilana today, okay?
Okay.
So just to give you an overview, before we get into the very specifics, the language regarding the zoning freeze, Richmond had proposed some alternative language, and we think that's acceptable at this point, based upon, I mean, it's a specific reference to waiving any, any potential zoning freezes with respect to Articles 1 and 2 on tonight's special town meeting. So that's in paragraph 6 of the agreement. Mr. Chairman, let me ask you, do you want this overview now, and then when they come in, we'll actually start from the beginning of the agreement?
Yeah.
If that's okay? Okay, with that understanding. Reimbursement of fees for this agreement, which is paragraph 8, we came to an agreement that the town would be reimbursed for the legal fees associated with negotiating this MOA and attending the town meeting, and not to exceed $12,000. And depending upon how long we talk today, we could be bumping up against that, but I think that'll be adequate, actually. We have added an additional sentence, however, that makes it clear that, that is, in addition, they have to reimburse the town for the actual costs of calling the special town meeting. And I believe we don't have those costs yet, Libby, correct?
Correct.
But it, it could be in the vicinity, did I understand, of around $10,000?
Well, I think something like that. There's the warrant that was published in the paper, the warrant that had to be mailed out.
Right.
The legal fees are gonna be possibly separate, and maybe some other, you know, there's other, other items that haven't been, happened yet.
Right. So, we have not heard back from them, but we assume, I believe when they first submitted this petition, they indicated they would cover the cost of the town meeting in addition to the legal fees. So that, there's language in the draft now to that effect. I mentioned water and sewer infrastructure. We were concerned that there'd be more specific language in the agreement, at least setting forth the outside limits as to how much additional infrastructure they would have to install over and above the land that's subject to the rezoning petition. We talked today to the DPW director, to Bob Gardner at the water company, and the language that we have come up with essentially puts a, indicates that they will not have to install infrastructure above, 25% above what they need to service their property. So that's designed, that's intended, and Andrew, you help me if I get this wrong, but that, that's intended to provide some flexibility to the town for additional infrastructure improvements in the area, over and above their specific property. And I think this consensus was from DPW.
Excuse me, I just wanna, Dave, what we're doing is, we're just, we're doing an overview, and then we're gonna take the whole document line by line, okay?
Fair enough, thank you.
John, just to be clear on that, that 25% and so forth is just about water and sewer?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
And also, we've added some language in, again, we haven't heard back from Richmond on this, I'm sure we will shortly, giving the water company flexibility in terms of how to meter the, the individual homes, as well as the apartments, and giving the water company the flexibility of having one meter in, or not, you know, individual meters or one meter, that's gonna be at the town's, water company's determination. We did some revisions to the language regarding the land exchange with housing Nantucket, and...
Can we, one sec, can we stay on 9, just for one second?
Sure.
When you're saying Richmond's development, is that just what we're talking about, or is that the other parcels that they're planning on developing in that area as well?
Well, I mean, I, I would interpret that, and again, Andrew, you could correct me if I'm wrong, but it would be the property that is subject to the zoning amendment.
Right. This is specifically related to the apartment buildings, and the water company doesn't want an individual meter for each apartment to have to go running around and chasing every tenant. So there's, if you, there's, there was legislation that allowed for that to happen, you know, where you could pass water costs on to your tenant, but we want the process managed by building, not by individual apartment.
No, I understand that part, but the, the one before it's saying water and sewer mains will not, there be quite, Richmond, which shall not exceed 25% increased capacity beyond what Richmond's development will require. So I'm wondering, does that mean their development now, or the development with their other stuff in the future?
No.
In that whole area? Because my concern is, it's a lot cheaper to put one big pipe in now than to put in one pipe and have to take it out and put another pipe in. And that's the question I ask every single time we do the sewer stuff.
Sure. Now, this, this is just the properties in the, under, that are subject to the agreement, so it's 25% above the cost of serving all of the development that's in the agreement.
The number of units they're putting in per this agreement.
Correct.
Which is 225 apartments and 100 households.
So, so the percentage would be for offsite costs, and that's, Kara, I believe has estimated that based on any potential upgrades to the, the pumping station, or anything like that. But the, the sizing of the piping and everything will be determined, when they, they have to, remember, they have to apply for this, for the subdivision. Kara will say, I want X size pipes to go through there, I want the pipes to go to the edge of the property, so other areas can connect, and I wanna make sure there's capacity. And that's what we include in our, as part of the subdivision.
Okay. Makes sense.
Richmond proposed some language in paragraph 19 regarding housing Nantucket and completing that land exchange, and we felt that the language as revised, and we'll, we can go through that in just a minute, but we thought that was okay, the way it's been redrafted. There, how's, Richmond wanted to eliminate the wording in the agreement that obligated the Board of Selectmen to support the zoning amendment tonight. I, I think they're concerned that we not have anything that could be construed as...
Some way contract.
Contract zoning, correct. We're okay with that eliminate, that elimination of that language. You know, we do, we do wanna make sure that there is consideration, however, for this agreement. And so there is, there, there has been all along general language in the agreement that says, the parties recognize that there's good and valuable consideration given, given by both parties, and we think that's okay. So I think, I think we're okay on that provision. The one issue that I do think is gonna merit some further discussion is how the safe harbor waiver request is going to be handled. I think there was a lot of discussion about that. You'll see in a minute that that's been substantially rewritten, but as we get there, I have some concerns about it, and would like to lead the board in a discussion with Richmond about that. So, those are the highlights, I think, of where we are. The one other issue I should mention is that today we did receive a letter from Richmond, and a copy of their certificate of title to the property, and the letter basically represents that there aren't any other liens or encumbrances on the property, but I'm gonna let them explain that in more detail when we get to that point. This had to do with Ilana's concern that we get, we make sure that there aren't other unknown parties, or unknown parties that have either an interest in, in the, a property interest, or an interest in the development rights that have not been disclosed, because if there are, we would want them to be signatories to this agreement. So we're gonna talk about that today, and how Richmond has proposed to address that issue. So with that, Mr. Chairman, may I suggest we just go through the document, again, for the benefit of Richmond, the Richmond group. We're taking Ilana's draft of today. It's highlighted in yellow, and it's document 53199. I think that's the simplest way to go through this.
535199.
What did I say? 535199. If that's okay with Richmond, we'll work from that document.
Sure. Good afternoon, Chairman DeCosta, members of the board, counselor, staff. Ladies and gentlemen, thanks for convening this, and giving us the time to work through this. That is our understanding, we received this by email about an hour and a half ago, perhaps. So if that's the same document, Counselor, then we're fine with that.
Yes, yeah, that's it, correct.
Okay, John, you wanna...
Well, I think the first, the first highlighted section is on page 2.
Yep.
It's the second full whereas clause.
Yep.
And again, some of these may be nits, but we're just deleting the word site approval. I think that's just a clarification, cleanup of the language. I assume there's no issue there.
Correct.
Okay. And then on page 3...
I'm gonna accept that.
Oh, yes, you can accept that change. So what we're gonna have Erica do is, as we go along, if we do reach agreement, she will accept the changes, and hopefully by the end of, within the next 10 minutes, there'll be no more read in this document.
Boy, you're, you're... 10 minutes, I like your schedule.
Okay. So then on page 3, there was an insertion, now we're on the second full whereas clause, just a reference to the fact that the planning board voted unanimously. I assume that's correct, Andrew, we're adding that in, we can accept that change? There was some, just some extraneous language in the next whereas clause that we, I think are all in agreement, can be deleted. Okay, now we're going to the next whereas clause. Again, we're inserting the word "all." I think that's just a clarification of language, I think we're okay with that. You're gonna let me know if, if I run astray, right?
Yeah, in the interest of time, why don't we stay silent until we have an issue?
Yeah, that's, okay, that's great. Now, the, the last whereas clause on this page, you know, we had a concern as to why Richmond wanted this deleted. You know, we do think that it's important, even though we do state that there's valuable consideration acknowledged. We thought this whereas clause was an important clause to make it clear that one of the inducements to entering into this agreement is that both parties have a mutual interest in avoiding a protracted comprehensive permit application process, and potentially appeals thereunder. So we thought this was an important clause, whereas clause, to include in the agreement. Richmond wants it deleted.
The comp, the comprehensive permit refers to the 40B permit?
Yes.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This was similar, although slightly less specific than the point about explicitly listing that the Board of Selectmen were supporting the adoption of the articles, that we think it tends towards, just leaning in an area that we're not totally comfortable with, with respect to contract zoning. We are of the opinion that there's plenty of consideration in this agreement that sets us in a fine position relative to that being judged in that way, if anyone were ever to challenge it. So we just don't see the need to include this. It doesn't really inform the agreement, and it, and it could do some harm to both parties, if this were challenged.
So what I'd like to do is to just put a little tick on this one, and we can come back to it?
Do, do we really wanna come back to it, John?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't have...
I mean, I, I just, you know...
No, we can talk about it now.
Unless there's something really critical from your point of view, I'm not sure I find an overriding interest in having it in there.
Okay.
That's just me.
Yeah, no, I mean, as I said, we, we do, and we're on the record with Richmond, saying there is consideration, and it is stated in the agreement, so...
I think there are such benefits to Richmond, overall, I just can't, I can't believe there isn't consideration.
Okay, so we can accept...
That's just my observation.
If, if the board's in agreement with that, and I certainly don't object, we can delete that.
And there's two...
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, no one wants to avoid a long and contentious process any more than us, so...
Yeah, I mean...
We're on the record with that.
And the flip side, isn't it, and it's not, nobody's seeking a long contentious process, so...
Where's the, where's the consideration section? Is it early on?
No, if you just go down to the now there for clause, which is just below...
All right.
It's on the screen now, it says...
Oh, I got you, okay.
Based upon good and valuable consideration that receipt and value of which is hereby expressly and specifically acknowledged by the parties. So that's in there.
I think, yeah.
So both of those came out, correct?
Well, let's look at the, the second one, I haven't looked at, Bobby.
Yeah, let's look at the second one.
Sorry. [inaudible]
The first one can come out.
It's, it takes a little bit.
Oh, okay. What was the reason for Richmond wanting to delete that second whereas clause?
I think it was just that, us, it didn't add to the agreement any, it was just extraneous, no real legal reason behind it.
You know, I think on, on the, on the flip side of that, Dave, it seems to me it's sort of a, a statement of commitment, which is, which you would agree with anyway, so that it doesn't, I'm not sure there's any harm in including it, from your point of view, but maybe, it's, it's not like the consideration issue, is my reaction.
No, we would agree, it, it does show intent, and is consistent with our intent, so we're fine with keeping it in.
I think that'll be helpful, because, you know, for the layman who's reading this, it just specifically states it.
Sure, especially to the public.
Even though we all know it.
Thank you. Yeah, especially to the public.
Yep, yep.
There's an extraneous paragraph sitting down there.
That's just, that's in the...
Okay.
All right.
So now we get to the Richmond's undertakings, and the first issue here is a paragraph, a sentence that we had requested be inserted, and it was our understanding this was agreed to last Thursday. A sufficient percentage of the rental units shall be restricted as affordable, so that all of the rental units shall be SHI-eligible.
And we're fine with that.
Okay.
Just to, to one point, Mr. Chairman and Counselor, the, the blanks above for the exhibits, we assume will just be filled in properly and attached? Those are the, the two zoning warrant articles that are recommended by the Board.
Yes, yeah, I, I think, as long as everyone understands that later on, we'll have to attach all the exhibits, as long as we understand what they are, we can still sign, you can still sign the agreement this afternoon. So we will accept that insertion, Erica?
Yes.
Yes. And then down below, we had wanted a sentence, at least 25% of the homeownership units shall have a permanent affordability restriction, and I, again, I think that was agreed to, correct?
Yeah.
On last Thursday? Do you have any...
Yes, it was, no objection.
Okay. And so then at the bottom of paragraph 1, I'm just seeing where this is, Richmond shall so restrict those units and shall use all commercially reasonable efforts to comply with any requirements?
Um...
Yes?
There's one typo just after that. Buyer's household's earning at or below, it should be 175. It says on 175, just past the, the 2, on the same line.
Page 4.
Yes, there should just be an E there.
Got it? All right, we can accept that? Thank you.
The red line section, Dave, do you have a problem with that?
No, we have a typo towards the bottom of the page, though, as well, that we just caught.
Okay, so we're, we're gonna insert the so restrict these units and shall use all commercially?
Yep.
I'm sorry, right above that, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
The last line on page 4, Articles 1 and 2, as so modified, it should say and?
No, I think it...
As are modified. We think, might be a syntax problem there.
As are modified.
Oh my, Mrs. Hurley would be so happy with this right now.
It should just be as modified. Just as modified, rather than as so.
Yeah, so the, the word so should come out, I believe, I think Mrs. Hull gets right.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, that's fine.
Can you come over here?
Those are fine, both of those additions are fine. Okay, now we're down to paragraph 3.
Could I just, back to that last read section that was read, shall so restrict these units? John, just to make sure I follow that. So so restrict, is that referring to the homeownership, and are they, just, just remind me, are they permanently or restricted, does it say that up above? So so restrict refers back to something?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
At least 25% of homeownership shall have a permanent affordability...
Permanent restriction, so that's referring back to that?
I accept.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think this is just clarification language in paragraph 3, although we had wanted, and again, we thought this had been agreed to on Thursday, that there be a specific obligation to apply for permits within 60 days, following the perfection of Articles 1 and 2. Was there a reason why that was taken out?
Uh, there was, Mr. Chairman, Counselor. The, the specifics here are troubling, because some of this is a little outside our control. We thought that as long as we're seeking or pursuing them, to put a hard deadline on it, even by way of example, you know, we still have some survey work to do, and we're not in New Hampshire, but say we get some snow and some cover, and we can't finish survey, and we can't submit these things for a longer period of time, but in general, we have a large project here, 32 acres, with a lot of engineering that we've already done, but a lot of engineering to come, and a lot of detail, and we also understand, you know, tonight is the beginning of a process here. We still have to refine the site plan, we still have a lot of work to do with the staff, and some beginning work with the planning board. So 60 days is just too hard of an outside deadline, you know, for a term of art like apply for. If it's seek or pursue, which means meetings with the planning staff, meetings with the homeowners, meetings with the planning board on an informal basis, we're fine with that. But apply has a particular legal or term of art, and we just don't wanna violate that, even despite our best efforts, and then have this whole thing blow up over something that's simple. So, that's why we were using the qualifier we were using. There's, there's an intent, I mean, I'm sure the board and the community can appreciate, no one wants to get this moving faster than us. We understand the priority here, that part of this is our alliance with respect to the safe harbor and the SHI list. The town doesn't want us to sit on these approvals and not go to the next step, so as to get the units on the SHI list. We fully understand that, but there is a practical consideration here, that it will just most likely take a bit longer than that.
Right. So, so Dave, one, one way to handle, first of all, just a question for everybody, if we, if three weeks from now, or three months, we wanna modify something in this, I assume the parties can mutually agree to change or modify any term we've mutually agreed upon. So, so maybe here, it makes a little bit of sense to sort of not leave it totally open, and we could say 90 days, and we're all willing to hear, why not? Or 120, I'm just trying to, so, so it doesn't go forever, and you don't want it to go forever either, so...
No, we clearly don't, but, you know, even 90, some of the stuff is outside our control, I mean, maybe even Andrew can speak to this. I mean, it's a complicated process to actually apply.
120.
That's just the reality.
I sort of like the idea of a number.
Yeah. We still have a lot of discussions with the neighborhood groups, even though those are advanced, and there's good faith communication on all sides, that does take a process. These people work for a living, they have families, you know, we, we're already demanding quite a bit from them, in terms of the time we're seeking. We have a lot of work left technically, with the engineers, with the surveyors, and I think we don't wanna be put in a position where we're rushing just for the sake of a document deadline, particularly with respect to the back and forth with the staff.
I would never wanna be in a position of rushing to a town meeting either, but I am.
No, we acknowledge that, and we appreciate that, believe me, and to that point, even the, the work that was put in over the weekend by the staff and the Coleman and Page team, we're very appreciative of, believe me.
Now, what, just walk me through this, because when we say apply for, is, are we talking about applying for a permit with the, with the planning board? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes, that's it, that's why apply has such a significance here. Pursue, seek...
90 days is even a stretch, here. I, from, from my building end of it, to do something of this magnitude, you know, if you were to say, you know, we wanna see a continuous effort or something along those lines, to, to make sure, Rick, they're not sitting on a permit for a year, but I can see this taken up to a year before they actually get to a final plan with the planning board. I mean, that's, that's a realistic number. I mean, like, like you said, you've gotta do the survey work, you may have to do some, some soil samples out there, groundwater samples, you get into the winter months when the ground freezes.
Exactly. Drainage is very complicated, because we're in the aquifer, or the 100%, all the subdrainage drainage.
You've gotta do the traffic study, all that stuff.
So, so why don't you just leave, you know, leave it at 120 or 180, and if it needs to be adjusted later, we can work it out later, you know?
I mean, I think we just leave it as, as, I, I don't know who, who struck this out, but...
I mean diligently pursue...
And shall as soon as poss, as reasonably possible, that...
That's fine. And diligently pursue is pretty strong language. I'm sure if we don't, you're gonna hear from Mr. Vors, you're gonna hear from the community, and as I'm sure your counsel will say, you can get us back in here and reopen this and say, hey, what's going on? Andrew tells us you haven't met with him in two months, and you're screwing around. You're about to...
If I may, Mr. Chairman, why don't we say Richmond agrees it shall, as soon as reasonably practical, apply for and diligently pursue?
That's fine, Counselor, and Mr. Chairman. We like the word diligently, we wanna keep our feet to the fire, trust me.
I'm fine with that.
That's fine. I'm, I'm fine with that, you know, I, I...
As reasonably practicable.
Look, I can understand that, too. It's a lot easier to get you back in here with a deadline than a, some other word, but...
Apply for and diligently pursue all necessary approvals, and why don't we change, are you okay with that language? Or do you want the 90 days?
Are you talking to them or us?
Yeah, well, all of you, actually.
I think the, the days need to come out, and you just should stay as soon as reasonably possible.
I would, I would keep, I would keep a, I would keep a...
A date in there?
A, a specific number of days in there.
Yeah, if you wanna make it 360, Bobby, make it 360.
Well, make it a year, then, I mean, you gotta give them time.
I'm not, no one's trying not to give them time, Bobby.
I understand.
The, the point is, if, it's a lot easier just to say, hey, we hit the date, come on and talk.
Yeah.
He's gonna have it 30 days on his calendar before the date, and he'll be in to talk to us.
365, Mr. Chairman.
360?
I, I'm concerned about 365. I would make it 120, and then, and then we can say, the, the timeframe may be spent, may be extended with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, which approval shall not be unreasonably withheld.
Right.
Well, my concern with that is, John, is this board changes every year, and you're gonna, we potentially could have two new members on this board in, in 120 days, or no, maybe not.
But I'm concerned about the safe harbor, you know?
I think that, that they will pursue their, all of their appro- I think that, that they will pursue their, all of their approvals, I'm not that worried about that timeframe, I think the more important timeframe is the commencing of construction once all the approvals are in place, I would like to say something on there, but I think they're gonna go forth with their approval process.
Yeah, and. Again, through you.
I would take out the, the reference to the days altogether then, and not put in 360.
Okay.
But then how, are you okay with the 90 to commence construction when all of your approvals are in place and ready to go?
As long as it entails the condition, which I think is here, which is after the expiration of all applicable appeal periods.
Sure.
Okay, so we're taking out the 60 days. Are we reinserting the and it shall as soon as reasonably possible?
No, we've already taken care of that up top.
Okay, so we're taking that out. And we're leaving in the and then shall begin construction within 90 calendar days of obtaining all necessary approvals required, but did we want to add something in there?
About appeals.
90 days after the appeal period? Is that what you were saying, Dave?
Yes, if we could.
Necessary approvals and appeals.
We could just say approvals.
And expiration of appeal periods.
Appeal periods, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Is that in there? Did I miss that?
There's some people talking on here. Um, is it where we want that?
Uh, except, and then shall, that's it, you should accept that.
Just one small drafting point while we're on this paragraph. Mr. Chairman, the second line at far right, the 325, we believe should read up to 325. It's not necessarily guaranteed that it will be 325, but that's the limit. So the should read up to.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes.
Oh, you were in the right place, Erica, of up to, and then strike the the.
So, so Dave, the, the up to refers to the first phase, not the total development?
No, that would be the total, Mr. Atherton, the total, including all rental apartments and the for sale units would be up to 325, that's the maximum we're seeking under all circumstances.
Right.
Okay, now, Erica, after construct the project in line five, so, yeah, after construct the project, before the comma put in, including the expiration of all applicable appeal periods. Is that okay?
Perfect, thank you.
All right, is that okay, members of the board?
Yep.
All right, so we'll accept that. And I believe the, this next one is just a straightforward clarification, right?
We would agree, yes.
So that can be accepted. We're already on page six. Okay, I think now at the end of paragraph four on page six, Erica, so we were a little bit surprised to see this was, was stricken. Our understanding was this was agreed to last Thursday, that there would be no short-term rental of any of the affordable rental units.
That was just a misunderstanding on our behalf, Mr. Chairman and Counselor, that's fine.
Okay.
We just misinterpreted in the speed of review.
Yeah, reject that deletion, or.
No.
Except, yeah.
Just a, Town Council, just a question procedure, as, you know, since there will be no short-term rentals for 30 days, will that go on to the special permit for the development? Like, how does this transfer over to the actual document?
Well, this is an enforceable agreement that the selectmen could enforce.
So we'd enforce it directly, not through the planning board?
You have that option, yes.
Okay. You can also request the planning board make it part of their special permit.
Right. You could also have it part of the special permit, but this is independently enforceable.
Got it.
It's, is this somewhere in here under the for sale units as well?
I believe it's at separate condition.
Okay, just want to make sure it's.
I think it, I, I think it is.
Okay.
Next group, right?
I thought that it was, but I'm just.
It's in paragraph five, yes.
At the bottom there. Same, same page, next paragraph at the bottom.
For those five short-term rentals showing in the regular period.
Our, Mr. Chairman, through you, five, I think, just the top of five just needs to get cleaned up to match three, to reference a building permit and expiration of all applicable appeals, which has the first half, but not the second. Huh, has the applicable appeals language, but it, it doesn't have the same language as three with respect to what comprises all permits. It's just a cleanup, we think. It only references special permit, not HDC and not building permits, as three does.
So, okay, if you go down to paragraph five, Erica. So we want to say upon, up.
Might be able to cut and paste from three, I would think, or three or four.
It's upon, yeah.
Middle of three there, yeah. Special permit, site plan approval, HDC, building permits, you just have to reiterate all of those in order. Think all the way down to commissioner?
Yes. All the way to the, yeah, cut that out, yeah, just insert the new language.
I think subdivision plan is dealt with above, so I think you have to keep deleting all the way to each, I believe. Right to there.
Right to there, yeah. I believe that's correct.
That looks correct to us.
Yep.
Is it all the commas and everything in there we need? Mrs. Hurley would be so proud of me right now.
I was just thinking that. I think that's good when correcting.
Her average, her average C student English pupil who.
Now, this, this additional paragraph was in response to the letter we received today from Richmond indicating that, that there are no other lien holders of record. And so we had suggested this language be in the agreement, and then we attached the letter that you sent as an exhibit.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, through you, that addition is fine with us, that references the letter that we provided this morning. The only thing we would want to get to at a further paragraph where it's more specific, we can either deal with that now or when we get there.
Why don't we just deal with this one then?
Sure.
Yeah, you can accept that. Unless the board has any questions.
Um, back to five, on these, the short-term rentals, this says affordable homeownership units. It should be all of the homeownership units.
Oh, that's correct. Yeah, we didn't catch that, sorry.
Okay.
That's what.
It should be, it should be all homeownership units, will not be rented.
And above, one, two, three lines above on the left as well.
For less than 30 calendar days.
One, yeah, the word affordable should be struck.
It's just affordable on the apartments, right?
It's all, so what you're saying, all units.
Well, all, the apartments shouldn't be rented for less than 30 days either.
Yeah, and that's in there.
I thought it only said affordable.
It did, there shall be no short-term rental of any of the affordable rental units.
It should be all rental units as well.
So, to just, just to make sure I got this, so there's no short-term rental, whether it's an ownership or a rental unit, right?
Correct.
Thanks.
And without regard to the affordable.
Right, so all units in the development are subject to that clause.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
That's the intent, correct, Dave, that the, no short-term rentals, either ownership or rental units.
Correct.
And without regard to affordability.
The board's correct, all units. I think we missed something on six, if we could go back, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. In the blue, the addition, similar to the kind of unwieldiness and logistics that we talked about before, we'd prefer not to attach the letter to the MOU, it's been delivered to the town. Again, when you get into this and lenders start looking at the documents, then they want to continue to look and drill down into letters upon letters, it's just easier for us and less unwieldy if we just say as has been delivered to the town on the concurrently with the date here of, or something to that effect.
That's fine, that, that's fine.
Thank you. Eight, Mr. Chairman, the only point we'd make is maybe just to add a provision that says within three business days of receipt of the invoice or something to that effect, just so, we usually don't have Patty carry the checkbook around every day. I'll defer to counsel to put it in wherever is appropriate.
Three business days, I think it was more.
Upon three, upon three business days of the receipt of a bill, et cetera.
Yep. Why don't you accept everything in that, Erica, first, Eric, and then we can.
Sure that won't put us high on the list of the accounts receivable at Coleman and Page.
I actually like to have a deadline in there because we have other agreements with other parties that we should have, we should start making this part of every one of them.
Yes, I agree. So, after town of Nantucket comma.
Can't clear a check at the bank in three days, so I think three days is a fair number.
Within three business.
Within three business days of receipt.
Of receipt, yes.
So, invoice or?
Receipt of a bill.
That'll rattle some people.
Just delete upon receipt.
If we, if we include it broadly, Bobby, it'll be fun.
Well, it might not be a bad thing to do.
I'm, I'm.
Maybe not three days, seven days, whatever, you know, depending on the circumstance.
Otherwise they'll wait six months.
Yeah.
Oh, you need to put the term three in, Erica, sorry, within, within X blank business days.
Within three business days of receipt.
Of a bill, that's fine, yeah. And I think in the last.
There's two uh's, yeah.
In the last sentence, we should make that clear also, once they get a bill from the town for the cost of the special town meeting?
Sure, that's fine as well, Mr. Chairman.
So why don't you just highlight, Erica, yes, Rich. Yes. Yes, just, just all of it up to Richmond, I think is the easiest way to do it. No, I'm sorry, start at the beginning of the paragraph, Richmond agrees up to and including the word bill. Okay, copy and, copy that, and now let's paste it.
Do you separate this word?
Yeah, just, no, put it up in, we're gonna have to put it up right after, as a separate matter.
After separate matter, right?
Yeah.
And then delete, Richmond agrees to fund.
Yeah.
For the town's, to fund, just take out Richmond agrees.
Okay. So I think there was, at the beginning of paragraph nine, we just had some cleanup language to make it clear, we're talking about water and sewer connection fees adopted, you know, in, in place by the town or the water company, it's not under the zoning bylaw.
That's fine, Mr. Chairman, Counselor, thank you for cleaning that up.
You can, that can come out too. Accept that, okay?
Accept that as well?
Yep.
That one, Mr. Chairman, we'd like to discuss.
Yeah, that's.
It's probably one of the few substantive things we have left, I think, if I could. I guess while we appreciate the town's thought about maybe limiting this, and this may sound counterintuitive and that we're negotiating against ourselves, and appreciation to Kara for coming up with a number, even though it's limiting our additional cost, we don't think it's inappropriate to put an artificial limit in. We'd rather just let the cards fall where they may with the review with the DPW and the planning board, and if it's more than 25%, we'll deal with it. Part of the spirit of this agreement was, we're gonna pay all the bills, and while it may sound contradictory, we think it's important to the community not to put an artificial cap in. If we have a negotiation with the DPW or the water company and it turns out 30% or 50% and we agree to it, that's what we want to do. So, I don't think we should put an artificial cap, we should just say as determined after negotiation and approval of the DPW and the water company respectively, or something to that effect. I know it sounds odd, but.
Isn't that the way it was?
That is the way it was, I believe, something to that effect.
Right.
We appreciate the effort to cap it, and again, it sounds counterintuitive, but.
I'm fine with it. Doesn't too often somebody wants to pay more than we request, so. Anybody, anybody got any issues?
I guess my only, I don't have any issues, Bobby, with it. I just wanted to make, I'd like to see it address, you know, traffic mitigation in some capacity, but I think that happens later on, so.
Thank you.
Well, I think it should be addressed in, in this document, we shouldn't just be addressing sewer and water, and I don't think it has to be a specific amount, but, you know, there will be traffic mitigation that will have to happen, and that should be, that'll be one of the considerations regardless.
Yeah, we acknowledge that, Mr. Glidden, and the jurisdiction there, as we understand it, lies primarily solely with the planning board and the Board of Account and Commissioners, your board.
If it does, it might not hurt to put it in and reference the planning board, Dave.
I think we're fine with that.
Good.
Yeah, well, my, my thought all, all along has been to make sure that, you know, we're, the town is, there's substantial benefit with this to the developer, and the town has to be sure that it benefits substantially as well. So however we work out the words, I want to make sure the fiscal impact group looks at all the impacts and that we find a fair way to do that. Like, we don't want to be, that's, so I, you know, I know the spirit of it, but I want to make sure we do that.
And so the question is, how do you write that into the document?
I don't know.
And I think just referencing it is, is important, you know, it's all traffic improvement, sewer, water.
Yeah, I don't want to be limited. If it's written in here, I just want to make sure we're not limited to just looking sure we're not limited to just looking at, when the fiscal group comes together, I want to make sure they're not just limited looking at the number of schoolchildren. I'd like them to study other impacts and make sure that, you know, that the fair share of those is paid as well.
Yeah, this section doesn't apply to those more general mitigation.
No, I'm back, I'm back on, I think I'm back on seven, which didn't have any changes, but I've just said, I'm talking generally. How do we address that generally?
Well, maybe we have another section that just says something very simply that, uh, you know, much along the lines of what Tobias just said, that Richmond will, you know, work with the town to analyze any traffic or other impacts of the development and assist in developing a mitigation program that will be overseen by the planning board, if you want to say that. But right now, that's not in here, so...
Yeah, well, let's come back to it. Let's do the rest of it and come back if that's an issue.
All right, so are we taking this section out, this 25%, is that the idea?
Yep.
Let's delete that.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Are we deleting it?
Yep. We're not putting a cap on it. We're taking that out.
I believe it comes up in one other place, the bottom of 11.
Does the above reference need to come out and the old language go in? Or does that stay?
No, that stays.
That stays.
It doesn't?
Yep. That goes. That, that's deleted. Yep, you can accept those next two changes.
The, uh, the purple that you just were on, Erica, comes out in water and sewer upgrades. So it should just be end at fees. Correct. Thank you.
Are you guys fine with this?
We're fine with that. We just wanted to add a provision, just so there's no miscommunication. We do this customer, oh, sure, I'm sorry. We just wanted to add a clause, Mr. Chairman, that acknowledges that nothing in here would prevent us, um, from contracting, from submetering the units through a, a third-party or private agency. We realize the WWC doesn't want to have anything to do with it. We just don't want to be precluded from what's customary today in apartments, multi-unit apartments, which is you hire a third-party private company, they come in and they install submeters to each unit, and that's how the landlord bills the tenants. But we would only get one bill for one meter for each building from the WWC. We would pay that and then bill that back to the tenants.
That's...
Through a submetering process.
Seems reasonable.
I don't know, Andrew, if you have something specific to help Erica along, so she doesn't have to pull this out of her pocket? Something to the effect of, "Nothing contained herein shall prevent Richmond from contracting for submetering with a private party," or, "Nothing contained herein shall prohibit..."
I think that was the water company's intent, was they, they didn't want to be the second, the third party.
Third party collecting.
Absolutely.
Chasing people for a $30 water bill.
Chasing tenants.
Further submetering, such services with a third-party company? Okay, great. Thank you.
John, we good with that?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. We can put that in, Erica.
I put a hyphen in here, so you... I think we want to take out that purple text then. Yes.
Correct. We agree. Thank you. Next one's fine with us, Mr. Chairman.
What's up with this one, guys?
Thank you.
Well...
I think 15 is fine with us, unless Town Council has further comment.
Well, what about, uh...
14 we're talking about.
We're talking about 14.
Is that coming out?
Well, we did not want that to come out. I'm sorry, we, um, no, we, we wanted 14 to stay in the agreement. Do you have an objection to the 14 that's been, I think you wanted that struck, we wanted that to stay in the agreement. Or perhaps you wanted to have a reference to commercially reasonable efforts?
Oh, yeah, my document that's been struck already. Oh, it's in the right-hand margin.
I think it's important that, um, that Richmond satisfied the requirements, whatever they are imposed by DCHD.
Oh, yeah, we just wanted to put a qualifier that said, "make commercially reasonable." I mean, there's a chance we may not be able to despite our efforts, that's all. And we just didn't want the town to be able to terminate, even if we did everything we possibly could do, and DHCD still said, "sorry."
Why don't we say, "shall use its best efforts"?
That's fine. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
In what section is that?
14. Take out the comment. Is that okay?
Scroll back. Absolutely. Thanks, Counselor. Just, we did take out that last sentence, 11, right?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
So you can accept that's 15, right?
Thank you.
And you can accept all that?
Just to, to clarify, the 225 rental units and seven of the 100 homeowner units shall be shy-eligible?
Actually, that's in reverse. It should be 19.
Should be nine, isn't it? Seven were the 175.
It should be 19.
19, actually.
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, I was gonna, I thought that number wasn't right.
This was total, 26.
26, right, they rounded up.
Why was timely taken out of 15?
Well, 15 now becomes 16, the numbers all change, right? Or is that still part of that? John, did we take out timely or did Richmond take out timely on this? Is this a cleanup? On, it's on 15 on ours.
Our perspective, Mr. Chairman, is just that it's vague. It's, I mean...
Can we define it?
90 days, 60 days, 30 days?
10 business days?
10 business days.
What's the number that's gonna, we're putting, we're plugging in here? 30 days? Is that reasonable or is that not enough?
For the purpose of application.
Within X, yeah.
Just information.
Reasonable request within X days.
Yeah, it says. Yeah, so as long as upon reasonable written request stays, not less than 30 days is fine with us, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
We're gonna add that.
Shall within 30 days.
Shall within 30 days, right?
Well, shall upon reasonable request within 30 calendar days or within 30 days?
Yeah.
Comma, within 30 days.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yep.
Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Shall provide or will provide?
And shall.
Provide, yep. Thank you.
Just so you know, Bobby, boats made it into an appropriate location. That's fine.
Yep. The boatyard, we happy.
Could I ask a question on 16? The, the monitoring, um, if, who, who, who collects the fees? I'm not quite sure. What happens here?
I can answer that, Mr. Chairman, and Ms. Vorse could probably confirm. With respect to the rental project, Mass Housing would be the monitoring agent under the statute, and they would collect all the applicable fees. They, they don't allow third-party monitoring for any rental projects. They do allow monitoring for, for sale product, projects. Um, even though this is not following a 40B process, um, our for-sale still needs to be monitored in accordance with the contract we're gonna sign with the town. Um, we haven't arrived at a final contract yet, but we have started discussions and we intend to offer that role to Housing Nantucket. We've confirmed that they are qualified on the Mass Housing list among approximately two dozen entities in the Commonwealth, and we've had some preliminary discussions with Ann and her team about that, and I think there's interest in.
So, so this is a way to have some fees go in there, just as if they were going to the state agency?
Correct. In fact, there's a fee upon the reseller of a unit that is not insubstantial.
Thanks.
All right, so we're on to 17, which is now 18. Yeah, it's fine, Erica. 17 on our document.
Uh, that's fine. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And then 18, which is now 19. Is that fine as well?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
19's good. We're going to 20.
Just hold on, on, on 19, um, I, I guess, you know, that was something that I wasn't, I don't feel is very clear. Um, reasonable satisfaction within a commercially reasonable time. I thought that was something we agreed very early on in this process, that that was gonna get done in congruence with signing this information, and if it's not, I think we should have some stronger language here. Um, you know, reasonable satisfaction, commercially reasonable time, you know, what time, you know, to my knowledge, it's been over a year, so, you know.
We can speak to that, Mr. Chairman, if you like. Um, as I believe the board's aware, through some informal updates, we are, um, on the precipice of completing that agreement with Housing Nantucket, even as late as about 1:30 today. We sent them over a last little bit of red line language. Uh, I'm not sure that their staff and board has been able to assess that and determine if we're in final agreement. Um, certainly, we could let Ann speak to that if you choose. Um, you know, we would want to put a certain number of days on it, but tightening it up to some extent is fine with us because we're so close to reaching agreement.
Well, why don't we add within 30 days or something, just to, just to get it in there, Dave?
And, and just, and that, that's, you know, 30 days or...
I have a problem putting a number on something that we aren't negotiating. This is a separate deal between two different parties. You know, you, you know how difficult it is for us to negotiate contracts, and to put a timeframe on it...
I think it's pretty much there, Bobby. It's...
Well, if it's pretty much there, then why do we need to even worry about it?
Well, but we've also, think of it this way, we've also admonished Housing Nantucket for not keeping us in the loop on it. You know, it's sort of, we, we made a trade as a town, and then it got changed, and for various reasons, got changed all around. We, you know, we admonished them and said, geez, get it back to us and tell us how you've done.
We're, we're not a totally disinterested party here.
Exactly.
I understand that, but, I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with commercially, the language in here. I mean, I just, I hate putting deadlines on... I hate putting deadlines on contracts that we're not part of the negotiation.
Well, I don't know, maybe we ought to put this one to a vote, because Bobby, it's been going on a long time, a year, and it wouldn't, in my own sense, if, if people didn't shine a light on it, it would, it probably still would be going on. So I thi, I think at this point, we've got, both parties are interested in the solution. They're both committed, they're right there. 30 days is not an unreasonable time to close the deal that's already agreed to.
Is 30 days enough, Dave?
They can always come back and ask for a waiver.
We believe it is. We're only one half of the equation, though, so perhaps you should ask the other half.
Ann, can you get this done in 30 days, Ann? Because, you know, they, they don't have the team of lawyers that these guys have. That's the, the issue. You know, they have a part, they have a volunteer board, and I'm worried on their end more than, you know, I don't, I don't want to put undue pressure on Housing Nantucket either at the same time.
It's Ann Kispah from Housing Nantucket, and I appreciate how much energy's been put into this and, and all the work. You know, a couple weeks ago, two weeks ago, we came in front of you and, and wanted to be able to have something signed. So it was about 10 days that we had. We thought we had a verbal agreement, but I think that it's just so important to have it in writing because there were a couple of different cases where our verbal agreement, we're hearing different things. So, um, I think 30 days would be appreciated, and I think we could get something done. I reviewed the draft that came over at 1:45. That's not my understanding still. So, you know, I think the sticky point right now is that we will not oppose, you know, there's just some conditions in there, and I can get into it more if you want, but basically, I'd like to have something in writing before tonight, and that's not going to happen.
No, it's not. We're barely getting this done, and we've had four meetings on it.
Understood.
So, you know...
So what, what that tells me is that we should make sure we have some language that references it and make sure it gets done, and I think that's easy to accomplish.
You mean by putting, by putting 30 days in? Is that what you mean?
30 days for them to reach an agreement, because they won't be able to close on the parcels if the subdivision's not fully done.
A written agreement.
But a written agreement, okay. I just want to be clear, because the language said "close."
It's okay with me.
That would be acceptable to us, to have a written agreement within 30 days.
Acceptable to us as well. Thank you.
Okay.
I think to Mrs. Holgate's point, maybe we should add a little bit of language, Counselor, that delineates between the agreement and the actual subdivision or conveyance.
A written agreement.
A written agreement.
An executed agreement.
The intent of the land exchange sounds good to me.
I think we should say, um, agrees to execute an agreement. Yep.
Thank you.
And I want to reiterate what Rick said. We're, we're an interested party in this as well. We made, you know, an agreement based on, you know, certain parameters that I think we want to make sure that, that spirit remains, that within 30 days, we don't get handed something that we...
All right, so if we're mutually...
We're part of the, we're part of the...
If we're part of this agreement, then I'm gonna request of, right now, that in 15 days, we get a, a written update as to where we're at, Ann, from Housing Nantucket, okay?
That sounds good. I mean, I heard what was said at last week's meeting, specifically what Rick said, you know, just that, that you, there's some muzzling, or, you know, you want to prevent that, and as a nonprofit that is accountable to the town and the public, I just have a, um, an inclination not to sign something like that. I'm gonna stand to that.
Do what you have to do.
Thanks.
So, so just to be, so 30 days, and then just to be clear, John, you know, this references to the extent in the same consistent with the release of restriction of the right of reverter. So what exactly is that referencing? So is that referencing the actual, um, you know, the original agreement we kind of voted on through a letter signed, or, you know, on our June 9th meeting?
Yes, well, the, the, the release of the restrictions is, is recorded at the registry, and, and that's what we're talking about here, so...
If I could, Mr. Chairman, um, I, I just don't want to let it lie with, with language. I mean, for the record, the agreement that we had with Housing Nantucket... I mean, for the record, the agreement that we had with Housing Nantucket that was amended, the agreement that we're negotiating now, that we're very, very close on, you know, to use words like gag or muzzling just isn't appropriate. There are mutual incentives in that agreement as drafted for both parties, just like there are for this agreement. And just like any other good compromise, like the compromise in this agreement and the compromise we're hopefully going to make tonight at town meeting, there's good stuff in there, and there's incentives in there for both parties. And that's what's in there. Now, we're down to one last issue. Ann and her board have been very good about discussing it. I just don't want to have the impression left on the record for the public that it's, you know, some huge issue that's remaining. It's a complicated agreement, it's virtually fully negotiated, and if we can get past this one agreement, one issue, it's probably likely that it could be fully signed within a matter of days. So, just for the record.
So is this language here acceptable?
I think you can take out satisfactory and just put written agreement, right? An execution of a written agreement? Oh, it did? Okay.
And I think to Mr. Feas' point, it does say specifically the town's reasonable satisfaction, so you have...
And as we've said, when we talked about this one a week or two ago, it was, you know, Ann, please get us the copy for review. Our town council can look at it. If we're happy with it, then, you know, then we're good. I mean, it's just, they're not, it's not as... We've got an interest in this. It's not as, what do you call it?
Not as passive as it might appear.
Exactly. We, you know, so there's some concerns that we have as a board that we were surprised happened. We don't want that to happen again. Let's get this thing done.
It may be that we have to mediate a little bit.
And I think it's pretty easy. Just get us a copy before anything is formally signed, and if we like it, great, we're all done, and if not, we come back. But I'd rather not have that happen. I'd like it to be good to begin with, yeah.
Absolutely. We're committed to that.
Okay. That takes care of, which one was that?
Nineteen.
Nineteen on ours, right. Okay. So, everybody's good with that, Tobias? Twenty? Which is now twenty-one.
That one, Mr. Chairman, just needs to be made consistent with the prior referencing the letter that was delivered.
I don't think we need that last clause.
You might even be able to...
So would be verbal, is the part that's highlighted okay?
Yes.
Striking it, counsel is fine with us, and, Mr. Chairman.
Well, that's, that's...
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
We're actually on twenty, Dave. The numbers changed, so...
Oh, sorry.
Reject that, yes.
Reject this one.
We're fine with that.
All right, and then twenty-one, which is, we're going to strike?
Yeah, that's fine. That can go.
Yeah. All right.
Because we've, and to be clear, that's because it's been referenced elsewhere?
Correct.
And so that, that kind of obligation in making the contract sound in the sense that we exchanged something is upheld?
Yeah, I think it's fine.
Now we go on to the town's undertakings.
So, this is a new paragraph, correct, Dave? This is a new paragraph, correct, that...
Yes, this essentially substitutes for the Board of Selectmen's support for Articles One and Two. Just to say, when we get to the next step, what we'll technically have to apply for is units under the DHCD LIP program, which are called Local Action Units, or LAU, and the Board of Selectmen are actually the applicant for that, under law, under the statute. So, in order to get those units on the SHI, you need to support that application, and we're just making that explicit.
And it's just related to this project?
Correct, and, and the LAU LIP program requirements. Not only will you support it, technically, you're going to have to be the applicant, or they won't count.
Gotcha.
I think we've done, we did one this year already.
Yeah, no, I think that's fine.
I can speak to this one, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please do.
So, this was added and then, I think, deleted over the weekend and then added back in our discussions with town council. It's been further qualified, and this gets to the point that I think in concept, we reached agreement on Thursday. One of the main benefits and provisions that we're working together as part of this agreement is to get the town to their incremental and long-term safe harbors under MGL forty B. Our only concern was, we would make all this effort, get you the units that we, as, our project would be responsible for, and then you could somehow, at a later time, turn around and use that safe harbor against us. And that's all this provision does, is prevent against that. We understand certainly that that wouldn't be the board's intent, but to be safe, we need this in there.
We, we did specify that, first of all, that we can't tell the ZBA what to do, but we did also specify that this was for just this piece of property. If you acquired any other land on the island, this, this did not apply to that. I don't know if it says that in here.
I think it says that in a catch-all at the end of the agreement. It may not say that here.
No, it, it says, it says that it's...
Or any other property owned by Richmond and located in the town of Nantucket.
That was my concern. Now, Mr. Chairman, we did change the language, so it's not that the Selectmen would grant the waiver, but you would support a waiver request to the ZBA.
This waiver and agreement of support relies only to the use of such safe harbor protections. It does not apply to...
Yeah, our concern is that it would apply to any land owned by Richmond on the...
Right, and I thought we were in agreement that it was, we were just talking about this piece of property, this whole piece of property that you purchased from... Like, if you were to go buy a piece of Monomoy or Walwinnet or whatever, and want to do a...
We like to say one-oh-six, just to make the point.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're fine with that. We think that was just an oversight, so.
Okay, so, John, we need to...
Chairman.
Could someone just...
Well, accept it for now, so I can read it, please.
Yeah, in the meantime, maybe someone, I'm not quite sure I understand what, what's happening. Aside from the words, what's the practical thing?
Tell you what I, is that if, after this project was done, if Richmond came in with another section of property on this piece to do a forty B, and we had the numbers in place to do it, to use the safe harbor, we would, we would not, we would send a letter to the ZBA stating that we support this project, even though the safe harbor numbers have been met. On this particular piece only. So in other words, if they bought Surfside and that number, for example, to use an extreme piece, we could still send a letter of opposition against that, because it's not part of this property.
But, and to clarify, so even under this, this project's, you know, timeline and scale, they'll meet their safe harbor requirements for an abstention period for the town within the given scope of the project. And so what they're asking for is that we not withhold them from continuing on to the full extent of the project.
But solely...
That's not exactly...
See, what we've done, Rick, we've deleted, if you look at the screen, that's what we're proposing.
Okay, I understand that, but going back to the idea here. If the next forty B on some acreage out front near Old South Road came along, and we were unhappy with that application for reasons, I don't know, whatever reasons, but, but...
Six skyscrapers.
Six skyscrapers, that's a good, good reason. We wouldn't be able to object, or we only could not use the safe harbor to frame our objection. So what if we objected to the height?
We could still write an objection considering the massing or...
Well, that's what I'm trying to understand, Bobby.
But we couldn't say, we have a safe harbor in place, deny this project.
I don't think I...
And actually, it's not our decision anymore. We could, we couldn't send a letter to the ZBA saying, well, we have a safe harbor, we can't use it. You're not stopping us from making comments on it. You're just saying we can't use the safe harbor as an...
Exactly, Mr. Chairman.
I just want to be sure that's clear to counsel, the distinction?
Yes.
The only thing now, in the speed of going through this, I think we do need to clean up, is any portion of the property, which is a defined term, which only relates to this thirty acres, or any other properties currently owned by Richmond. That's what we meant to be. Not future acquisitions, currently owned by Richmond and located in the town.
What is...
Okay, my question is, where are...
What else do you have?
That's Exhibit Z, the list.
It can be, and it constitutes the entire, you know, sixty remaining acres that are contiguous to the property as defined here.
Could we say the contiguous? Because Richmond owns a few other properties, I believe. In Monomoy, Washington Street, no?
Unless there's something I don't know.
None of them are owned anymore?
Do we say contiguous, or we get a list that's later attached to this document?
I think contiguous. Contiguous is acceptable.
Does that work?
Wouldn't, wouldn't we just, just to be prudent, wouldn't we just reference, you know, this document is being signed in relation to some properties? Wouldn't we just reference that whereas section?
Except that only constitutes the thirty acres that are applicable to this zoning article.
The zoning article changes.
Any other contiguous...
Doesn't, doesn't affect the other...
Currently owned by Richmond. We want to qualify that.
The outlying areas of the...
And just to Mr. Atherton's point, Mr. Chairman, it's actually more restrictive than this. It's, it's only, if you get the safe harbor without us, you can still use the safe harbor against us. It's only if you get the safe harbor directly because of us.
Yeah, and I think it's all reasonable. I just want to make sure we all understand what it's saying.
Yeah, it's confusing. We have to rewrite it three times ourselves.
You know, just, just to be clear, you know, I was looking, I was looking at my map geo, map earlier. You know, there's a property listed under Richmond on the corner of, you know, the road out to the airport and Old South that's been cleared.
That's why they're saying contiguous. It would have to attach to this thirty acres.
Yeah, let me clarify, Mr. Chairman. Some of that is just the assessing records haven't caught up with some of the sales we've made. For instance, that one Evergreen property, I think you're referencing, Mr. Glidden, we sold a year ago.
So if we add the word, by adding the word contiguous, it would have to attach, and I think that would cover the...
Andrew, would that be consistent with what, you know, you kind of anticipate, how the project might unfold and your understanding, as to now that wouldn't be unnecessarily onerous on the town's obligations?
Yes, because we want them to, again, with the phasing that this references, it could be forty-nine units, ninety-eight units at a time. So that will give, you know, a one or a two-year window of time. So then we don't want to turn around and say, oh, thanks, now we won't accept another project.
Right, but in, but what I'm asking specifically, though, is in, in reference to the, to the area outside the zoning, you feel confident that this wouldn't overly burden the town's hands?
No, the language you're putting in there is what, is, is what's needed.
You know, because if there was other development outside this already designated area, that would have, you know, other impact on the town that we'd want to be able to weigh in on and potentially use the safe harbor for. And you, and so what you're saying is you don't find this in conflict with whatever those evolutions might be?
No.
As far as residential, you know, I don't quite understand what the other zoning is around this area, Andrew, so I don't quite understand what that means. Do you see what I'm saying?
The key is we want to get to safe harbor as soon as possible. Because remember, forty B, it doesn't matter what the zoning is. It could be Moreland Management District for all, you know, the, a forty B ignores local zoning. So, anything we can do to get to safe harbor for as long as possible, until we get to ten percent, is what we need to get done.
Right, and I, I get that, I understand that. It's what I'm, I'm not understanding, though, is in reference to the other properties outside the ones already designated in this document, what impacts would they, so they have potential to have forty, other forty Bs on them?
You mean Richmond properties or somebody else?
Richmond properties, in contiguous.
I think his question is, are the contiguous properties appropriate for forty Bs? Is that your question?
I think so, yeah.
The ones that might be adjacent to the main properties, is what you're saying? Yes, they're all...
Because in, in theory, they could have forty Bs on them.
Put it another way, they could all be residentially developed, where initially we thought some portion might be, have commercial or retail or a mix of other activities. If they changed their mind, because residential was so attractive, and wanted to go a hundred percent residential, and we didn't change the zoning or accommodate them in some way, they could go forty B, and we couldn't use the safe harbor.
For the adjacent parcels.
For the adjacent parcels.
Right. I, I'm not worried about it, because again, it's part of the same overall plan that we're going to be reviewing, so I, I mean, I... The other properties would be Nancy Anne, I think. Nancy Anne Lane. And they're already in the CN district now, so they, they have an option of mixed-use commercial and residential now. So, and again, it's the same roadway network that we're dealing with, so...
So you're going to look at all that impact when you go, when the planning board looks at this, they're going to look at the potential for either a commercial development there or all residential. It's going to be factored into the traffic study and all that.
Right. What I'd be concerned about is, I get the point, that if it's a parcel that faces into another neighborhood or is totally removed, and I don't see those in this case.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I just, I just wanted to be, be clear that...
It's a good question.
Yeah, no, it's good to be clear, so we're all on the same page. Absolutely.
You know, we don't want to be, I have no problem, you know, not, you know, it makes, it's very clear to me not opposing this, because as they go forward, you know, we want them to get to ten percent. Within the, you know, we don't want to pull safe harbor after they build twenty-four units, say, hey, slow down, that's not my intention. But I just want to be clear, is what we're saying is that, what we're acknowledging is that if they had a forty B that's not referenced in this document, they could pursue a forty B, and we wouldn't necessarily be able to oppose it on the grounds of safe harbor. But it's kind of, to my understanding, and I'm just thinking out loud, it wouldn't really matter because it's the ZBA's decision at the end of the day.
Correct. All we're going to do is write a letter.
Great.
Okay, so this language, taking out properties and adding land contiguous to the property and currently owned. Is fine with everyone?
Acceptable to us, Mr. Chairman, yes, thank you.
Okay, let's put that in?
Yes.
So this is accepted?
Where are we now, John? Three. Is that, just good with you guys?
This one, I believe, is the last, I would say semi-substitute point we have, and we're almost done here. Now that we've accepted five above, we'd like to replace the deleted portion of Right to Cancellation Two, which basically says, in the event, basically what it results is, in the event the Board of Selectmen is not able to prevent the ZBA from using safe harbor on us, we'd be able to terminate this agreement. Plain and simple. So it basically adds to what we've accepted and agreed to in five.
Well, but you're, you're terminating this agreement based on something we have no control over?
We think it, you know, adds, you know, it's a fundamental incentive in this agreement.
I, I get that.
And we realize legally, and counsel can speak to this, we spent some time on this over the weekend, you know, there's case law and mass general law that precludes one agency from taking action or committing an agency to some specific action in the future. And this is our way, from a practical standpoint, of keeping the agreement intact and the tension of the agreement intact, but giving us a termination, notwithstanding our best efforts and the Board of Selectmen's best efforts that are clearly embedded in this agreement, if a third party goes rogue on us, we want the ability to terminate.
So what happens, what happens if this zoning articles pass? You're allowed to build your three-hundred-and-twenty-two rental units and your fifty, a hundred, your hundred homes. You build ninety-eight apartments, say, I'm just throwing numbers out here, twenty-five homes. Then you decide you want to apply for another permit, and the ZBA denies it because we've met the safe harbor for that year. Then the other two-hundred-and-twenty, what happens to the zoning then? Does that zoning stay in place, and now you can build whatever you want in there?
The zoning, I believe, would stay in place. The question is, would we exercise that zoning or go apply for a forty B or another regulatory means of getting permits on that land that may be zoned in accord, that's already zoned in accordance with Article One or Two being considered tonight? So, while that's a very limited possibility, the scenario you envision, technically, it could happen. Now, the approvals that would follow through from Article One and Two being approved are, we think, very consistent with what a forty B would be comprised of in terms of density and composition, so we don't see that being very likely at all. But, you know, this agreement's going to last for a while and is, you know, pretty complicated. So, you know, we just don't want one agency of the same town, when the other agencies enter into a good faith agreement that clearly wants to prevent that but can't do it by law, we're doing it by termination right. We're just substituting the inability of your board to get what your board and we both want in this agreement, making it unilaterally in our power to terminate.
In layman's terms, by agreeing to this...
In layman's terms, by agreeing to this line item in here, we're basically telling the ZBA, if you use a safe harbor on that future project on the contiguous land, we're losing all the other units.
You're blowing up the deal. Correct.
See, now that, I don't, I, here's the, now we're in the unintended consequences category that becomes difficult. And for argument's sake, something like Bobby has proposed could happen, we could get partway through. You want the thing blown up, you go for three skyscrapers, they say no, and.
No, but I think, I want to clarify this, because it's, they can only, it's not, they can say no on any of the criteria, and it's still fine. It's only if they say no on the safe harbor. Is that what we're talking about?
Only if they use the safe harbor explicitly against us.
Right. So they can, they can say, it's not, you know, not appropriate, it's too big, it's too much traffic, too much massing. We, and we're, we're allowed to make all those comments as well.
Absolutely.
But we can't say, our safe harbor number is in place, we don't want this to go forward. That's all we're asking for here.
Absolutely. And the only point is, we're the sole reason you got the safe harbor, so we just don't want you to be able to turn it around on us.
That seems reasonable.
So is the language here?
For me personally, I want to see this project approved through the planning process, through the neighborhood, and get built, because I think these units are going to really be important to the island in the future. So I don't, myself personally, have a problem putting this in, because it specifically states, the only, the only, the only reason we can not approve it is based on the safe harbor. It doesn't mean we can't make comments on all the other stuff like we did at.
I understand.
At 106 Surfside. And I, I don't mind putting this pressure, it's not really, putting this in here, even making it a deal breaker, because I don't want to see the, I don't want to see someone use this as a way to stop these units to be built after we make the safe harbor, so.
And Bobby, I agree with you. If, if, if that was just what was designated as the whereases to what's being changed, and the property that we're referencing, but if it's the other properties adjacent to this one, in 20 years from now, we might have met the safe harbor, and Richmond might say, hey, well, we want to do a 40B, the housing crisis is worse than it was in 2015, and we want to pursue a 40B, and a future board, then this agreement is lost.
But 20 years from now, this would all be built out, and it wouldn't matter. I mean, they're not going to take 20 years to build it out.
But it is restricted to the property, which is the subject of this rezoning, not other property owned by Richmond.
So this, this wouldn't even apply to other contiguous properties, as Council's pointing.
So this really, this really just deals with what we just did?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure.
This is why that we pay the lawyer so much money.
Yeah, if that's how, you know, if it's just in reference to the properties referenced in this document, I'm fine. Okay, thank you. Sorry to make so long winded.
Just so I understand, this is number two, leaving it back in, in effect? I want to make sure we're looking, I don't know what we're looking at.
Yes, restoring two.
Restoring two, right.
Yes. Yes.
Now, the only other question of this, are we tying the hands of another group that could potentially want to do this? Like, is the safe harbor, does that come from the ZBA? So, you know, how can we say what they'll do? I understand the intent, but I just want to make sure it's.
Well, they can still, they can still.
Practical purposes.
Use the safe harbor, but they're, they have to understand that this project will, the disagreement will be terminated. So we're not tying their hands. I mean, we're not, and they can do whatever they want. We're just saying, this isn't, if that happens, if they decide to do that, isn't that right, John? Am I correct there?
Correct.
We're not saying you can't do it. We're just saying, we would like you not to do it.
Could I ask you another question? If, aside from the safe harbor, if we hit our 10%, then this doesn't have any impact, because you don't need the safe harbor anymore.
Correct.
Correct?
And I think, for me, I mean, maybe I'm oversimplifying this, but the reality is, you know, your comment of 20 years, that does make sense. Your comment of 10% makes sense to me, Rick, but I believe this whole project will be built long before we get to those two numbers, so.
Yeah.
You know, it will take this project being completely built to get to the 10%, and I can't imagine that Mr. Passon's going to decide to drag this to sell the division out for 20 years. I mean, that's.
And my understanding on the numbers, it doesn't even get us to the 10%.
No, it doesn't.
No, this, this project, but, but.
It can buy you the one or two years.
Yeah, and I think, Don, with the two other projects around town, or what, who knows what might happen, we could really hit our 10% before we realize it. I, that's what I expect is going to happen, actually.
Possibly.
Hopefully, because we need to get there.
Until the census.
Yeah, and then it's going to go up again.
Every time we build a house, it goes up.
Mr. Chairman, if we're accepting that, I think the first, the subset one does read a little awkwardly, awkwardly. A decision, as I say my words awkwardly, a decision by the zoning board of appeal denies, some syntax, maybe it should say, a denial is issued, or a denial.
Denying.
See what I'm saying, Counselor?
Denying, not denies. A decision by the zoning board of appeals denying a comprehensive permit. Is that?
Or maybe, maybe the word if could be changed to with respect to, the first, first word if in the whole paragraph. Sorry.
Well, how about if we say, if the final approvals for a project proposed by Richmond for the property.
Or maybe the word are is missing before one. There's some tactical problems there.
Are one denied.
By a decision of the zoning board of appeal.
Yes. By a decision of the zoning board of appeals, and then take out denying a comprehensive permit. On the grounds that the town.
The second by in that second line, Erica, needs to be removed, changed to of, I believe.
Decision of, yeah.
That's fine, of the zoning board.
So, John, just to clarify, or Bobby, in this process, wouldn't, for this property outlined in this property, the zoning board of appeals would, or through the, the planning board would approve this process, and so the ZBC wouldn't come into effect for the comprehensive permit for the project? You know, that is referred to here in Articles One and Two. There wouldn't.
Well, this, this would only apply if they pursue a comprehensive permit on this, on the property.
On the property, but under, but under this, under kind of what the plan is laid out, they wouldn't be applying for any comprehensive permit. They'd only be going through.
They'd apply for a special permit to the planning board.
Through the planning board, okay.
Right. Could I, could I just ask, Andrew, a question? Under the zoning, we're, under, if the changes go through, then in order, shows you, I hate to.
Can I interrupt for a minute?
I hate to even ask the question.
Ann, are you leaving?
I'm just going to make a call.
Oh, you're coming back. I just, okay, thanks. I just, I have one comment for you before you go. So if you're going to leave, just raise your hand, so I can make it. Okay, thanks.
So they still have to come to you for like a special permit to get the extra benefits of the bonus lots, or whatever they're called?
Right.
Okay, thanks. And you could always deny that. I mean, that's another way that this.
Terminates.
Terminates.
Right.
All right, we good on this now, guys?
I'm going to the main paragraph of two, make sure you're good with this one.
Yes.
Okay, and then decrease the number of units. Is that good?
Yep.
We have a couple of quick points on that. I don't, I guess we don't understand why the words total are being taken out. There are totals in the agreement that are referenced, but then the word total isn't kept after. And then the word units, I don't believe, needs to be capitalized. It's not a term of art.
Yeah, we don't have to make those changes.
All right, let's.
I mean, restore total.
I don't believe Counselor, units is a term of art, or defined term, so, just lowercase u.
Yep.
I thought you wanted to leave total. Total units.
Total number of units.
Or number of total units?
No, the total number of units.
Number of total units, yeah. Number of total units or total.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
And then repeat that in three, well. We're fine with that, it's like the board and Counselor. I guess that's right. Andrew's made a point. Counsel, in that last paragraph, starts then, Richmond. Technically, we've opened up the possibility of the ZBA denying it, denying a permit. So I guess it needs to say, 30 days of the final approval, becoming final, or the receipt of denial by the zoning board of appeal. I don't know, would there be a notice of denial? Probably not. Maybe you can help us with that, Attorney Giorgio?
Yes, I hear you. I think that's fine, or the receipt of a denial by the zoning board of appeals.
A denial, yeah.
Or a receipt of a decision by the, a denial, that's fine, yeah. That's okay.
Thank you.
Or the receipt of a denial by the zoning board of appeals?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Can I just clarify something in general? In Section Two, I'm just trying to understand this. So it says at the end, program or a comprehensive permit subsequently issued to Richmond for the development of the property under the Lip Program. So under the Lip Program, a letter would be submitted to the ZBA as a normal process. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Now I get why. That's in there.
That's important. Let's just say that again. That's even if there's not a 40B?
Exactly.
Right.
So because of the process we're going through, it's not just going through the planning board, because we're also going through the Lip process, we're going to be issuing an agreement or a comprehensive permit, sorry for the wrong terminology. So it will go to the ZBA on this project that we've outlined. Not on, not on any other parties attached.
Well, I could clarify that, I think, Counselor. It might, if we choose to go by way of comprehensive permit. The town and we are availed of just using a regulatory agreement, which would be between us and the board, and we would exclude the zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
That's probably the most likely outcome.
But in the event it doesn't, you want to have this.
Right, okay.
So, Andrew, just again, on the same subject, the seven Surfside would have had the same things it had to deal with?
Seven Surfside requires a regulatory agreement, yes.
So, so that's the route we chose?
Correct.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Just for information, if I could, Mr. Chairman, the LAU process and application is much more streamlined and much simpler than the comprehensive permit process. That's.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out why the language is in here.
Exactly. And three, our only point was just to reinstate the total and total words again from above. Otherwise, we have no objection.
That's fine.
Accepting.
And we're leaving total in on these lines?
Yeah, that's a corollary to the total and total above. Gremlins in the machine. Subset C is fine. That's just to prevent, prevent any reduction of the locally affordable 175% AMI units. We have to stick to that total, deliver that total.
Is that all good?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we're on to miscellaneous.
Consistent, Mr. Chairman, on number one, with the previous removal, we want to put a period after Glawacki, because we're not attaching the letter as the exhibit, we're just delivering it to the town.
That's, that's fine.
Yep.
You can delete that. I'm sorry.
So you just, you just delete after, Walter?
No, I get that, but we're working on the number.
Yeah, that, I think that becomes part of paragraph one, is the idea here.
That's what I was asking, would that have just gone up in paragraph ones?
Yeah, it's fine with us, indistinguishable. Thank you.
Did you guys add two back in? Not understanding any of the terms.
We did. Counsel accepted that.
Yep, that's right.
I think we have a typo above, I'm sorry, Erica, in the, in the previous three above miscellaneous, I'm sorry, there's a. The next paragraph after C, the word how, or the word hall should be shall. I'm sorry, back up to three if we could, Mr. Chairman, and this is our last point, I believe. The word Counselor limitation was taken out. I think we just wanted it to reference both waiver or limitation. We don't know why. Because you could have a limitation which would comprise a full waiver. We just wanted to qualify it with that. Waiver or limitation?
Limcetation?
Yeah, that's fine.
I believe that's it for any of our remaining concerns or comments on the entire agreement, Mr. Chairman, other than incorporating the exhibits.
So the, the last item, item six on the miscellaneous, we're, we're fine with adding with the agreement to the notices, not being originally withheld.
So two, two can be accepted?
Yes. Yes, item six is fine. That was added back by Town Council, and we're fine with that.
We're there? Great.
I think we are.
Let's get it printed up and sign it.
And let me just say again, I guess for the record, Mr. Chairman, we, we do appreciate the staff, and Mrs. Gibson, and Mr. Vors, and Town Council really working hard on this over the weekend to get us in position to get this done tonight, this afternoon in advance of tonight, and the board as well, scheduling this and spending so many hours on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we wrap this up, a couple of quick, quick questions. What, how, how do we adjudicate this if we have some disagreement? Should that be delineated in here? Is that necessary or not?
I would not, I would not, I would not limit it. You would go to court.
You'd end up in court.
And you would have all the remedies available.
I see my name fixed. Can you just take the hyphen out of my name before you print it?
Yeah, I would like to avoid going to court at all costs. That's why I was asking, is there another way to do it?
Well, I mean, you can always, you can always agree to mediation, but I generally recommend that, that you not include that in the agreement, and certainly not binding arbitration.
So you make that, you make that, you make that decision when you.
Based on the nature of the dispute.
Of the dispute, then you talk it out at that point.
Yes, that's what I would recommend.
Tobias?
What are the exhibits? Just if someone could lay them out roughly?
They should just be, and Counsel could confirm this, they're intended just to be plain copies of the warrant article as currently constituted in the warrant.
Great.
As recommended by the planning board.
Great. And then my other, just kind of more general question is, you know, back to 19, when we, when we agree with, when we talked about this issue earlier, these, those four new lots that were going to be created under Housing Nantucket, those, so those units will not be included in the 25% home ownership? Is that clear?
They're not. They're in addition to that. They're in addition to that.
Great, thank you.
Since we're on that, Ann's not in the room, but I'm gonna make this request to both parties, that in, if in fifteen days you haven't come to an agreement, that we would like copies of the contract to the point where you're at, so that we can maybe work as a, as a mediator to resolve this issue. I'd like to see this closed up in thirty days, and sometimes a third party can help that process along.
Understood.
You're fine with that? I'm gonna talk to Ann and express that to her, but I think sometimes it takes a fresh set of eyes to come to an agreement.
And my only other question is, how is the, what was it, is it seven? The finance committee, how is that fiscal impact gonna work? And how is that gonna, like, just, do we have that encapsulated in this agreement strongly enough? And how's that gonna work? I know that's been one of Rick's concerns, has been infrastructure. So how is that, is that fiscal committee, are they, is, is the way it's written mean that it's, they're only looking at the school stuff, or are they looking at everything and then helping to inform the planning board?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Feath's question from our perspective. Our perspective is, it was a more broad fiscal impact report, and I thought that language found its way in here. Our intent, as we've indicated to both your board, the finance committee, is to form a working committee that will be composed of, of a handful of members of, a Board of Selectmen representative or two, a FinCom representative or two, several members of the community, residents that are particularly versed in statistics and that type of analysis. Mr. Morrison comes to mind, and we've spoken to him briefly about this. Perhaps the town finance director, an assemblage like that of a working group that would set the scope for the study, and then would also review and report the study back to your boards. That's our intent.
Back to us and to the planning board?
Correct.
Yeah, that, and I, and I guess what I'm questioning is, are we specific, is it, is it that wide? Is it wide enough in seven? I guess this is for the lawyers. For the smarter guys in the room, does it, is that encapsulated in seven?
Could I make one suggestion that I, in accordance with the, the major site plan review, a traffic study is required anyway, so maybe we, we would actually add that in? I mean, it's something that you have to do. Anyway, maybe there's a reference we add to it here.
In seven?
Yes.
Sure, we're fine with that. We understand the bylaw is what it is, and we understand our intentions, so we're fine with that.
So, so let's at least do that.
That might ease the concern of a few people in the community who've indicated they'd like to see that, so...
Yeah, I mean, you know, I think we have to understand, a lot of the comments I've received, Dave, are just that, the impact on Old South Road, and we all hope the planning board does whatever it has to do, but they're concerned, because there isn't a...
Well, I think a lot of people...
It's an unknown.
I think a lot of people don't understand what the planning board does, so if we put it in there, it'll ease a lot of tension, so...
I think that's important. It eases my concern to some extent.
Councillor, if you can figure out where to insert that, John?
Well, and I, and, and remember, it's a joint effort between the planning board to require things and your board to implement things, as the county commissioner. I mean, I, you know, I, not all of you are on the board...
I understand, if you, if you recommend six traffic lights, we're gonna have difficulty, Andrew.
Right. And I, as a matter of fact, I extended an invitation to your board to be on the Noshup area work group, and was told very, I would say impolitely, that none of you were interested. So, maybe the next time we have one of those boards, maybe I'll get a volunteer.
Well, it's a different board then.
I know, it's a better board now, so...
We're much more involved than passports.
Thank you.
What do we? No, no, I, I think...
It's under Richmond's requirements, so it's at the beginning.
All right, go up to seven, paragraph seven, and let's just add it as a new paragraph. So, go to the end here. After so it...
Could we just add it, John, where it says, "We'll have a financial impact report and a traffic report, traffic study?" Or is that...
Well, I think you wanna highlight it a little bit.
Okay.
That would be my recommendation. Andrew, can you help us with some language here, what you would like to see?
So, I think that we would say here that Richmond shall provide the planning board, and do you all want the traffic report too? We would say...
Yeah, to both parties.
Okay. The planning board and the Board of Selectmen, a traffic, a detailed traffic report as required. I don't know the section offhand.
We would agree to a slip page or to fill it in, councillor afterwards, if you want to reference the right section of the zoning bylaw.
I think it's section twenty-three of the bylaw.
How much is as required under the bylaw?
You know, which contains, would, could we go so far to say, which contains updated traffic counts and a discussion regarding mitigation measures?
I think that would be right on target, Andrew.
You good with that, Dave?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's fine.
And I would say...
Or analysis in lieu of discussion, maybe?
Traffic count and an analysis of required mitigation measures.
And what?
Analysis.
And analysis of required... And take out discussion regarding. Is there an issue with, with Richmond agreeing to implement those mitigation measures?
Since we don't know what they are, I think we...
Not, not fundamentally, I guess. To add that to this agreement seems to be too specific. I mean, it's gonna be as, as decided by the planning board and the Board of County Commissioners, ultimately.
Right, I, I'm a little nervous with that lang, sorry, John, I'm a little nervous with that language that you added, because required by who here? You know, if, again...
Of recommended mitigation.
Yeah, recommended is probably a better word.
Yeah, because...
I would agree, councillor.
You know, we, we could have a traffic count now that says, "You're required to have traffic lights," as Rick was saying, and, you know, I don't know who wants to really be responsible for that.
That would be you.
You're wrong.
I will not be at the microphone when that's proposed.
So, we're gonna recommend it.
Is recommended okay?
Yeah.
Andrew?
I believe, yes.
Fine with us, absolutely.
Thank, that's good.
Andrew, where do you think this went, Dave?
Section twenty-three, I think. It's major site plan review.
So, the only thing left in this document is to insert the Y and the Z, which will be done after tonight's vote, correct?
No, I think they can be attached as is, because it's, it's...
Do we have, it's the articles?
It's the articles as currently constituted.
So, article one, so those two numbers should change to article one and articles two instead of article A and B.
Exhibit A, exhibit B. Right there.
So, is it one and two, or A and B?
A and B.
And I guess, to this point, if I could, Mr. Chairman, there's a, there's a provision that was added in here very specifically by town council that we support, that could come into play tonight, and I guess we, this might be a good place to maybe strategize a little bit with councillor and the board. If, if amendments come up tonight, we will be put in a position where we will have to declare whether we believe they're substantive or not in accordance with this agreement, and maybe we should just have a slight discussion with the moderator before the meeting to make sure both parties agree on the logistics of that. You know, we'll have to be called upon once an amendment, when an amendment is offered, and we have to state on the record under this agreement whether we believe it's non-substantive or substantive.
What section are we talking about?
At the bottom of this section. You know, it's just a procedural thing that Mrs. Alge will have to manage, but...
Dave, while they're looking at that, I assume, I mean, I don't know, someone might very well offer an amendment about the connections with Cedar Evergreen and Daffodil, and whether that's within the scope and so on, but I, I assume that's such an obvious possibility you've, you and the planning director have considered how to respond.
Well, I guess...
Or maybe, have you, do you have a separate agreement yet with them, between Richmond and them, as you did last year?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, we, I'll ask, I'll answer the second question first, I guess, if I could. We don't yet have a written agreement with Cedar Crest. We have been negotiating with them over the past several weeks in earnest to put a letter agreement in place that would be something short of a full MOU. That was delivered to them yesterday evening, and they're still reviewing it. My understanding is they're supportive of what it says. Basically, what it says, as to your point, Mr. Atherton, is, we have agreed, and this is consistent with the discussions we've had with the planning staff, not to submit any plans that show any cut-through roads, and we will stand side by side with the neighborhood and advocate that they don't be included. If they are ultimately included by the planning board and the Board of County Commissioners, we will endeavor to try and make them circuitous in design such that the volumes on the neighborhood will be minimized, including the use of speed bumps, speed tables, and the like. So that, that is out there properly with the neighborhood. To your other point, all this does is require us to state on the record whether we think it's a big deal or not a big deal. It doesn't terminate this agreement contemporaneously on the floor, it just allows us to issue an objection that says, in our minds, this is substantial, and we have the right to terminate if it goes bad, basically.
Because somebody could make an amendment to say, you're only gonna have twenty-five homes and a hundred apartments, and...
I, I have not discussed this with Richmond, but I have discussed it with the moderator, and it's similar to the representation, representation I made the other night, is that I do believe tying improvements to a different law, subdivision control law, is not appropriate, and I believe that is beyond the scope. So, I don't know what this alleged amendment looks like, but...
A number of the amendments that people might interject would be outside of the scope of the article, is what you're saying.
Yeah, I, I can understand that, but I'm not sure there is an alleged one yet that exists by any way, but I have heard from residents...
Right.
Who are concerned, who want to think through possibly how to protect their interests. And I, I think Dave's as, as close as probably we can all get at this point, and if that can come to an agreement, I think we all benefit.
I agree, I agree. I don't think, it's just to be clear that the zoning, the, the roads can be changed now, with or without the zoning. So, you know, that is a totally separate process. It's, it's amending the subdivision.
So, in that case then, Andrew, because you think it's out of the scope of the article, Sarah won't accept the amendment, correct?
Well, again, not having seen an actual...
Well, I'm just saying, if somebody came in and said, "We want to make an amendment that says you can never go through these two roads," that would be out of the scope of the article.
Right. There's a, there was a proposed amendment made, or discussed at the planning board, and part of it we accepted, and part of it we did not make for that very reason, so...
All right. Now, what, yeah.
Matt?
Yeah, what happens? What happens if something is, is with, I guess, what if there is an amendment? Yeah, I'm just, I'm thinking, I'm just trying to think through, what if there is an amendment tonight, and, but there's an amendment that you guys feel, you say on the record, "We don't agree with this," and then both articles pass, and then you come back to us and you say, you know, "We don't agree that this agreement is null and void, but we've actually just voted in zoning changes." Where is, you know, where is our redress? Where's our, you know, where is the town's redress in that situation?
I'll, I'll let councillor clarify that.
We call an immediate town meeting and try and undo it.
Yeah, because it's seven, it's seven years.
Well, I think it's important for us to say that on the floor, is that if this amendment passes, there's a good chance that this deal will go away, and that they can build whatever they want in there.
If we support, well, I guess if there's amendment like that, then we have to be willing to stand up and say, if there's amendment you guys don't like, then we have to be able to stand up and say, "Kill the deal." We have, I'm just thinking strategically, we have to be ready to say...
And I guess that's why I offered the point, that...
Right. We have to be ready too.
We essentially will be allies in that discussion and hope that...
Right.
We both work towards mutual, mutual objective.
It would behoove us to stand up and say, "If you vote this amendment through, more than likely, this deal will go away, and you'll end up with no affordable housing and a change in zoning," so. Or, at that point, if the amendment passes, then we need to get up and say, "We don't support this article anymore."
Well, that's my point, is I don't think that fast sometimes, and if I'm thinking about it now, you guys might remember it, so, you know, it's hard.
Point is very well taken, that's why we mentioned it. We're, again...
Well, if there were an amendment, if an amendment were to pass, that would essentially destroy this agreement...
We could withdraw support of it?
I think you make a motion to indefinitely postpone the article as amended, and if that passes, it kills the, it kills the zoning amendment.
A motion to table or...
Yeah.
Yeah, but it, but technically, it would be a motion to indefinitely postpone.
And what's the vote on that, fifty percent?
That's a simple majority.
Well, hopefully that won't happen.
But let's see what the amendment says, maybe it's a good amendment, anybody will like it.
Maybe we'll get, maybe we'll get no amendments, who knows? Let's see what happens.
But somebody, you'll need to be ready to make that motion before somebody calls the question, so.
So, I, yeah, okay.
I guess what that points to is, we should probably have a little pre-meeting with the madam moderator and get on the same page.
Glad we clarified that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
The finance committee is meeting in forty-five minutes to hopefully take a look at the final draft. Can we give them something that says "final draft" at the top?
Yes, I think we're just ready to print it and sign it, right?
We're not doing the final draft, right? It's gonna be the final, final.
The final article.
Well, is it gonna be signed right now?
Right now, I think.
Can we print it here?
I may have to go upstairs and put it in somebody's computer to print it, but I'm just...
You guys are prepared to sign it?
Do you need a motion to that effect, Mr. Chairman?
It probably wouldn't hurt. Do we have a motion to approve this document as amended?
Yes.
Second?
Now that you have that one little section about traffic and infrastructure, I'll go along, Bobby.
So, you're second, Rick? All those in favor?
Aye.
Without that, I was prepared to do something else.
Okay, so, we have the, the document as amended here on the floor has been approved five all, Eric. If you could go upstairs and print it, we can make an extra copy, and we'll sign one and give it to the FinCom, and they, they'll have a signed, executed.
Yeah, okay, what we should do is email...
We can all sign it down at the table when we get there, ten minutes to six, if you want to. Everybody sign it together.
You're posted for five-thirty, just so...
Anyway, that's an idea.
Okay, so we have to be there at five-thirty?
They send electronically now, right?
Yeah, the FinCom needs to get it at five o'clock, so if we can email it to Lanell, she can print it out and bring it to them. Can we get paper copies to have in front of us at the meeting?
Would you guys just mind signing it at five-thirty?
That's fine, Mr. Chairman.
So, should I, should we...
I think we could adjourn, and we can reconvene at five-thirty, Bobby.
Right, that's what I was trying to get to.
Yeah.
So, I'll make, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn till five-thirty at the...
No, not till, no, just adjourn.
Just adjourn.
Because we have a posted meeting, we can just reopen.
Oh, we do, okay.
So, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ann, you were out of the room, but what I said to Richmond, and they agreed to, is that if in fifteen days you haven't come to an agreement, we would like a copy of the document, so that maybe we can act as a third-party mediator between the two parties, okay?
Well, thank you. Is that from today?
Yes. So, fifteen days from today, if you haven't got a signed agreement, bring us what you have, and we'll try to help you to get to where you need to be.
All right.
Okay. Thank you, Ann. Thank everyone for coming and...
Thank you for all the effort.
I, I'd like to say the same thing about councils on both sides.